What?
Oh, yeah, so, um. Yeah. Go to that for speaker.
Are these all the conditions for this?
I think these are what.
Uh, hey, Pat, can you hear us okay?
From. From select. Oh.
You there, Pat?
This is, oh, goodie.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect, thanks. Um, the camera is active, monkey, I guess. We're on this camera. Uh, so, hi, everybody, I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Meeting for December eighth to order at seven oh two P M.
Yay.
Back to seven oh two P M, look at that. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes for November tenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, I know that. Lorraine and Lisa, thoughts about it?
Lisa and Maureen, make corrections are right there if you want to double check it, but.
Oh, I didn't, yeah, did you do a reply out, because I didn't see your change?
No, I just sent it to him. Oh, I haven't, I was, I find the new website always.
I just said the same thing to him.
Times, and so the first time I just thought. I wasn't sure that I had everyone in. Entered already as, so I could just say planning, but I was going to have to take everybody in. I don't have time for this, I just don't, so I just sent it to him.
Oh, all right.
I figured.
I just always like to see what changes you made, and then, and then I save that.
Always just clarification or bring my, usually it's clarification.
I had a problem too, I sent it to him, without the changes, I'm not sure what happened.
I think I'm getting better at the site, but I, I, how did we choose this particular? What's, is this just a? The shelf kind of thing?
Yeah, it's like a pretty standard backend content management or something. Um, okay, any other comments? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move we approve the minutes?
Motion by Lisa, second by Lorraine, all in favor?
All right.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the public comment period, this is an opportunity for anyone from the public to bring up any topic about something that's not already on the agenda for this evening.
Matt Gillespie, work trusty as liaison.
Hey, Pat.
Thank.
Yeah, okay, too cold. Okay, uh, hearing no other comments, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I will move to close the public comment period.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Lisa, all in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for special permit number twenty twenty five dash forty nine oh seven. Cartamont Home Builders are proposing to build a single family home on number sixteen located on the Rock Press Lane, and tax parcel number forty two point one dash thirty seven point two one six. Portion of this parcel, parcel, excuse me, is located within the unique natural area of Tompkins County, which would require a special permit according to Village Code, section one forty five dash forty eight B.
That is given you, you have in front of you with the. Yeah, part one with the corrections that you requested.
Okay.
The addition of forests and aquatic number five, and then the. Fourteen.
Right. Good.
Other than that, I said that I would speak with Brent Frost. Um, I don't mostly, maybe some of you know, Brent will be. Retiring here soon, which good for him, he's been there a long time. Uh, he has asked. Uh. Me to help him stay on as our engineer.
Just for us.
I would love to have him here.
Very well, lovely.
I've mentioned, uh, I've mentioned it to Ronnie. I will sit down a little bit. Another time and talk with Ronnie a little bit more about it, but. I'd love to have him here, he.
Yes.
Uh, matter of fact, Brett sought in today, and I thank him because he, uh, I can't tell you how much help he's given me since I first got here.
I was.
How much I've learned from that man, he is, he is full of knowledge, that's for sure.
And he really thinks of things that we just aren't capable of knowing, we should be thinking about, and he has a lot of history here. I mean, he, I will say, so helpful for like our P D A that we went through and some of the issues that we, we couldn't have ever.
So he's going to try to keep doing some things on his own for a little while until he moves out of the state, and as long as I'm here, I'd like to see him stick around.
I would second that.
Yes. But getting to that point, I spoke with him, as I had said at the last meeting about, uh, it's just the basic sweep, and that would be having. Tilt fence on the downhill side of the construction, you know, before any dirt is being moved to help keep the land from rotting. I did put that in the, as a condition in the special permit, and then Brett also agreed to have Scott Cartamont participate in two of the eighteen green practices that you have copy of, and that is also the conditions of the special permit. As far as any other conditions you want, I gave you a list there, I didn't see that any of them were talking about, it's nothing. That's kind of all I have, you got part two and part three in front of you?
Yep, so we did, uh, part one last time, obviously, that's why we had a couple, couple changes to make, so that's all done, but, um, yep, so like Mike said, we can do, um, we can do part two, we can do the seeker, um, and then move on to the resolution after we close the public hearing, so, um, everybody does have a copy of the, uh, part two of the short E A F in front of them, so I will read down it, if you have, uh, any comments, let me know. So one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No or small? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No or small? Will the proposed character impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No or small? Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? No or small? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No or small? Will the proposed action impact existing public private water supplies? No or small? Public private wastewater treatment facilities? No or small? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No or small? Will the proposed action result in the, in adverse change to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No or small? Will the proposed action, can't even talk, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No or small? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No or small? Um, so with that, um, everybody after that, I think, has copy of the seeker in front of them, the seeker resolutions. Uh, so this is the Village of Lansing Planning Board Resolution for seeker review of special permit number twenty twenty five dash forty nine oh seven, adopted on December eighth, twenty twenty five. Um, I read over what the matter involves, that's A, um, and then B on November tenth, twenty twenty five, and December eighth, twenty twenty five. Village of Lansing Planning Board performing the lead agency function for its independent and uncoordinated environmental review in accordance with Article eight of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law, State Environmental Quality Review Act. One, determine the proposed action provided for herein as an unlisted action in accordance with seeker. Two, thoroughly reviewed the short E A F, and any other, all documents prepared and submitted with respect to this proposed action and its environmental review. Three, completed its thorough analysis of the potential relevant areas of environmental concern to determine if the proposed action may have a significant adverse impact on the environment, including the criteria identified in six, N Y C R R, section six seventeen seven C, and four, completed the short E A F. And now, therefore, be it resolved as follows, we have two options, we can find a positive declaration or a negative declaration, I will entertain a motion to say negative declaration. Motion by. Don't have everybody jumping once.
You're not jumping. You guys, so happy, sir.
There's motion by Kevin, there we go.
Negative means it's okay.
It's weird, it's bad.
It is, uh, I was just, is that?
Also, when they call it an uncoordinated review, it's like.
But I know, it, it does take a moment to think, wait a minute, negative sounds bad, but it.
Not in this case, yeah.
Yeah, so that's why I was waiting so that that could sink in, actually.
Oh, okay.
Because it is, no, it's kind of funny, okay, I second that.
Second by Lisa, all in favor?
Aye.
Um. No, we're doing that now. Yep, uh, so, uh, with all that said, before we can move on to the resolution, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Oh, fuck, a motion by Lisa, second by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
That's all, I have you. Okay, then next, everybody has in front of them the special permit resolution, so, uh, this is the Village of Lansing Planning Board Resolution for special permit number twenty twenty five dash forty nine oh seven, adopted on December eighth, twenty twenty five. I did already read over, um, what the matter involves, um, and also B, and also, uh, C, other than I'll add in that, um, we do have all the other, um, all the other things that we went over last time, we've got, uh, all the G M L two thirty nine and things like that.
Hang on there.
Yeah.
Let's do the part three.
Don't I do that after we do this? Oh, no, I can, oh, I can do that, no, okay, yeah, so I will sign then the, um.
Oh, I was going to ask you, yes.
That's easy.
Now that we're here.
Okay, um, so, um, again, uh, Village of Lansing Planning Board hereby finds subject conditions and requirements, if any, set forth below, and the provisions provided for in paragraph B above, that the proposed action meets one, all general conditions, I heard of the general conditions, sorry, skip over the general conditions, before we move on, I had it right in front of me too, um, I'll read over the general conditions, uh, we do have to read over all of these before granting any special permit, so if, um, you find that one of these isn't, uh, accurate, let me know. Uh, one, it will not be detrimental, two, or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare, two, it will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity or neighborhood, three, it will not impede the orderly development of the vicinity or neighborhood, and is appropriate in appearance and in harmony with the existing or intended character of the vicinity or neighborhood, four, the off-street syst, the street system and off-street parking facilities can handle the expected traffic in a safe and efficient manner, five, natural surface water drainage ways are not adversely affected, affected, six, water and sewage or waste disposal facilities are adequate, seven, the general environmental quality of the proposal in terms of site planning, architectural design, and landscaping is compatible with the character of the neighborhood, eight, lot access, lot area access parking and loading facilities are sufficient for the proposed use, nine, the requested use or facility conforms in all other respects to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, and ten, the applicant has shown steps will be taken where necessary to meet all performance standards and all other applicable general regulations, I will entertain a motion to say that these requirements have been met. Motion to say all these requirements were met. Motion by Kevin.
Second.
Motion by Lorraine, all in favor? Okay, now we can keep moving on with the, uh, uh, resolution. So again, um, meets all general conditions required for all special permits, um, any applicable conditions required for certain special permit uses, and three, any applicable conditions required for uses within a confined district, so we can either approve or deny this, and as Mike mentioned, it's got the typical, uh, conditions on here, um, we did add the two about, uh, D and E, um, choosing at least two of the green design practices, and approval of a settlement regulation. So I will entertain a motion to grant the special permit.
I move that you grant special permit number twenty twenty five forty nine oh seven.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Lorraine, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is to continue the discussion of Village Code changes and corrections, so at the last meeting, um, we did get through, Lisa and I, the last chunk of the chart uses that her and I were, uh, responsible for. And there were also some questions that came out about, um, some definitions, I know that you've been, um, talking about definitions a lot, so, uh, the next thing that we do kind of want to do is at least go through the information, I know Natalie dug up some things about, um, some of the specific definitions that we had last time, uh, what you have in front of you is a list, a printout of all of the definitions that are in one forty five eighty two, including, um, language about some of the ones that Natalie found, so. We can talk about those, we can go through and discuss them tonight, um, if there's, you know, I think there were some specific ones that came up at the last meeting we can focus on, and then we can, uh, talk about next steps now that we've made it through all the chart, so there's a couple things, I will, um, I know Lisa asked if we could get a printout of that kind of updated chart that I've been tracking, so we will do that, um, so that you have at least a kind of hard copy in front of you that's color coded and not just colors, but also symbols, so that, um, you can have that as a reference, and then we will talk about next steps, what we want to do next, because even though the chart is accurate, unfortunately, we're not done with, uh, everything in there. So, um. I wanted to open up your email too, Natalie, let me get that real quick, and we can focus on some of the, uh, some of the, um, definitions that you came up with after the last meeting.
Excellent job, by the way, now.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Oh, do you remember which, oh, there we go, was it just the ones that the?
So, no, some of them, I just went through all of the definitions, and then throughout the discussions, I recall some comments about wanting to add certain definitions or things, so those are all.
Those are the ones that are at the end, so why don't we go and let's take it, take a look at least at the ones, um, that are at the end, that's on the last, I think, two pages, and maybe it's more than two pages.
Some of them are dependent on, so.
Yeah.
Throughout the thing, you, you say no change current, or current, and then proposed, all the proposed ones are ones that I came up with, to change it to, and then other definitions to think about adding.
Yep.
If we change a definition of school, you'll then need to do this, do daycare center and nursery school, yeah?
Yes. For the last three pages.
Or childcare facility in general.
Yeah, so these, these are, um, these ones here are the ones that kind of, yeah, came up about kind of really going in and changing a definition versus, you know, hey, what we have is mostly sufficient, maybe we want to make a tweak to it, but these were kind of bigger changes ones, so, um, yeah, the first one was a new definition of school, that was one that we spent some time on, and trying to differentiate between, right, there were a lot of questions, what about, you know, if it's like a, like an adult kind of education center versus a, and some, and some of those things were captured in here, but, um. If people want to take a look at them.
So these are definitions that we think we should add to this chart view.
There was, when we were going through.
Were in going, some specifically in going through, we said, need a new definition for this, so I went and did it, right, some just while I was going through all the definitions, I was like, this could be improved.
So.
So school was one of those ones, right, there was, right, when we talked about a place of, well, a place of education operated privately or public, or by a public agency for the education of seven or more students, and this is where we kind of broke into, well, defined student, right, it's not really defined there, and that's some, there were some comments about, what if it is like an adult, you know, education type center, well, those are students that, you know.
But then, as you said, if you, okay, if you adopt the new school definition.
Yep.
That wouldn't necessarily include daycare centers or nursery schools if they aren't attached to that school.
Right.
If we keep, well, wait a minute, and if we adopt the new one, now, the new one is the pro, which does say this term includes daycare.
If it's.
With ancillary to the school.
Right.
Oh, and, and accessory to the principal's.
Yeah.
Then we would need to differentiate for daycare, so you can tell I did. But. Before or now? Okay. This. Okay, so when we say, though. That it includes daycare facilities, nursery schools, kindergarten, and similar preschool, pre, um, nursery schools, childcare centers, daycare, and day camps.
When accessible to the principal use, so.
No, I'm talking about the current definition.
Oh, right.
Includes them already, but we don't have a definition for them, is that right?
Yeah, right, I didn't, well, it might be in, was, I've.
One forty five eighty two, I don't.
This is, this is all one forty five eighty two, well, that's, right, that's one forty five thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
This is where I start, you know?
Well, so, we can peg down definitions, and then we can all make, we can make sure that they are all in the right place.
Well, that's what, that's right. And then I did, for the purpose of this exercise, copy and paste what one forty five eighty two says at the beginning.
Yeah.
It is not to supplant definitions or additional conditions, just to suggest.
Yeah, they are, yeah, they're illustrate. That is the problem, is they're sort of, you know.
But that's okay, and we. Right, so we even went through that, we were talking about things, we were like, well, you know, we should, you know, as we started listing up examples and some of them, it was, well, this isn't a complete list, this is.
I think it's totally called typical uses category of, you know. Because I went through that too and thought, okay, what is one, what are they actually called in our code, and those are called typical uses, not definitions?
For schools, what if you were to list it as New York State accredited schools?
New York.
Well, we have it as proposed definition.
Is it, is a place of instruction certified by the New York State Board of Regents, which is devoted primarily to academic instruction, and offering a curriculum of study which is in sufficient compliance with the education laws of the state of New York. This term includes daycare facilities, nursery schools, kindergarten, and similar preschool or pre-grade programs, when accessory to the principal's school use.
Here, I can share it too, so you can, um, see, Jim, what it is, or Jim, sorry, Pat, that we're talking about. So under schools, there's the current one here, um, and then a potentially proposed one.
And we've kind of modified these, we should just run it so off.
But it does seem that probably we have to get them, but the state, is it, is it a certified school that's not certified by the state? Or what, I mean.
I mean, is that, I mean, is that what, I mean, it's what, it's what our intent is. When we say a school, what do we mean?
What do you want it to be?
Right, yeah.
A place of education is. Operating privately. And some of those probably aren't cert, well. The seven or more students kept.
Yeah, that was, that was the problem, I didn't know why that was included.
I think that's the biggest sticking point on that.
But it, because it is odd, because then in looking at other definitions of daycare center or nursery school, to find one that I thought would be best, seven or more, it repeated a few times in different.
How did these things get started?
I don't know why it's.
To three or more individuals was the daycare center.
Yeah, that's, I thought we wanted to make it as small as possible.
In that.
What I would, I think.
An activity provided for a program of daily care and supervision, oh, and then the second choice is. Seven or more minors. So.
And we, you know, I, I want to go through these and have them show in discussion tonight, but if we don't, if, you know, if we can't settle on something tonight, that's fine too, for those people who look at, but I, I don't want to just say, look at, look at them, let's have a little chat about them at least.
So in terms of the difference between a daycare center and a nursery school.
Daycare center is.
Care only, there's no. I think it's actually the reverse, maybe.
Daycare center is licensed, and nursery school.
Licensed is accredited, or social services law. So the, as I recall, the, um, okay, so, when we got into that one thing where somebody wants to do a daycare center, and we got, went through all of our steps, and then it turned out we really had no control or authority, it was totally a state setup, that we couldn't even get involved.
Wouldn't we get involved?
We couldn't, we didn't have to issue a special permit, we didn't have to do, remember it was down on Berdick Hill Road?
That one next to, by us.
I guess.
Which is no Robinsons.
Yes.
But the thing is also, there's other things other than what the state ed requires, I mean, you've got buffering, you've got a bunch of, you know, that would be beneficial to the applicant by having a special.
For some reason, we went over places, I guess it was before you came then, was it?
You talked about the nest down there.
One over there, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was, it was Robinsons.
And then we were going, we had some conditions or the stuff we thought, and then it was like, really was up to, was basically regulated by the state.
I mean, you, the planning board doesn't, in general, the planning board doesn't look at the floor plan, at what has to be done on the floor plan, like I said, you do with making sure that you have the tree law sidewalks, buffering, all of the most.
So we still have control.
Outside, where state ed is in control of, they have so many square feet per student they could have depending on the age range.
Okay.
So if you don't want to get into the nitty gritty, I thought childcare facility was a nice catchall definition.
So what is the, the Montessori school that's up off of Craft, what is, what's that considered?
That's a school, the school.
The school, school?
It's, I mean.
What's the grade level, I mean, is it like?
They go through kindergarten, and up to, up to and including kindergarten, yeah. Stay used on that.
Nursery school, right? Is it considered a?
Not ex, no.
Sorry, I don't have any.
I mean, I would say that, I would say that it falls under the current definition of school.
Yeah.
Yeah, three or more, yeah, it does, probably.
But you had five.
Oh, right, right.
So what you have up is the new one down here in Lawland Building, the Montessori school up here, and then Vineyard Church has one.
What church?
Vineyard Church, twenty three Center Drive.
Oh, is the, I didn't, is the.
Small mall there?
Oh, for some reason I thought that.
They sold them on there?
I thought they moved out of there for some reason, I thought I saw a sign somewhere else, and, okay. They have it during the week, uh, nursery school in there?
I don't know what they're ours, I just know they have it there. Now, not, not getting off topic here, but this Thursday, I have to meet someone from the state ed department down here at Lawland Building. Um, and he, he just, he called me because he just got this area in, within his districts, all his districts that he has to look at, so he has to inspect all of these, and he said he wanted, it would be beneficial to meet with me because he, he could learn about codes, and I said, no, it'd be beneficial for me because I can find out. He goes, well, then that ought to work out just fine, I may have some more information for you.
That's interesting.
Certain questions you guys want me to ask, uh, ask him.
I noticed, I noticed that they have pretty pictures on their.
On their, on their fence, yeah, they, well, whatever. Childcare facility does sort of.
Yeah, it just kind of takes away all the nitty gritty.
So you've got a school, or you've got a town facility, those are the two things, and I think that at least having that, right, it was the separation between, while, as we talked about, like, school, it's not what we mean, meant in the code, by school necessarily, like, there's a lot of things here that fall in that category that aren't necessarily there, so should we have, you know, catch.
implies instruction, to me, and, you know, nursery schools, yes, they can be, and, you know, A, B, C's and all that kind of stuff, but not really, but there's not a
Right. Yep.
Yeah, I, I kind of like that.
The idea of.
Childcare facility.
So then let's, you know, take some time between now and the next meeting, and, um, you know, take a look over the definitions of that, of the proposed one that Natalie put in there for school, and then also, um, the concept, and she has an example there on the next page of childcare facility, and.
So, but basically, what, if, if we went with childcare facility, then we would say we take the proposed.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And then just put.
And then we would add a, we would add a new use of childcare facility.
Yeah, we would need a new definition.
Yep, and Natalie has an example there.
Yep.
And then there had been the ongoing question about adult.
Right.
Instruction, or like a dance studio, which is taken care of by the definition of office studio or service.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, this gets a little tricky. Domino effect here.
Oh, not to change, this is kind of, went to a different topic, but the religious facility, you know how some of these churches in the summertime, they have like summer camp?
But I would say that the primary.
It's accessory.
Use is, it's a church, the accessory use is.
Yeah, I think that's very key, is the whole accessory thing.
Same thing, like, as a school that also, even, you know, the school, if it has an attached daycare or something, right, we would still say, yeah, it's a school, even though the daycare might run more in there than the school does, you know, if you do summer camps, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, there are some other ones back here, so she hasn't known here about kennels, I like that.
Well, that's really terrible.
Yeah, clearly some effort put into kennels.
And did they have a big issue in another village that I represent, people did not want them near their homes, so, so I'll think about
They don't want noise.
Those dogs barking off.
They are noisy at dinner time, I can tell you.
Oh, sorry, I'll scroll down, Pat, so you can see.
If you have enough space, it's not too bad. I never noticed it actually.
Yeah, my pretty sensitive deniers, but It's about
I think
Aren't your kennels usually
Are what?
Aren't your kennels, kennels like, they're usually in rural districts, aren't they?
Usually.
Usually, but
Usually, but not always. I mean, if you're in the city, they aren't, you know? There's nowhere to, yeah. Besides, we might not always be rural. You never know. What, you're
Would you even want to allow kennel? Maybe you don't want.
So let me ask you this, I was just thinking, for a bit there in the mall, they had a training.
Together, ECA.
Do, is
Is that still there?
I think a dog training club, and it's at the other end.
Yeah, it is, yeah, but I'm just thinking, you know.
Oh, they do, they
They don't board them there, just bring your dog, do training, leave.
They've been in there for several years now, yeah.
Oh, that's funny.
The grooming place in the mall.
People wa, well, when I used to walk in the mall last winter, people that were coming in for the training would walk their dogs in the mall first before they'd take them in there. Or they'd be outside the mall walking them, so they'd go to the bathroom outside before they'd bring them in.
But that won't fall in here because they're, right, they're not hard to
Any premises includes destructive skin, wear and art.
So if we were to have, say, SPCA come in the village, then it would have to be within a commercial district?
Where everyone
Well, wherever we say, yes, you can have a kennel, yeah.
What about Colonial? Do they have outdoor runs over there? Because I know they do boarding.
Outdoor run.
Outdoors.
They have, you know, we, the building I worked in, it was right there.
Oh, right.
Yeah, but
They have a bit of an area that's fenced in between our, the building I was in on Graham Road, and where they would sometimes in the winter take them out.
Oh.
Yeah, but I, I also
But they also walk them in the neighborhood.
Yeah, they're also principal uses not as a kennel, right, they, right, yeah, sure, if you have to take your dog there, they have to stay
There for the hair.
Right, yeah.
They do do boarding, though.
Oh, really?
Probably not a lot, but probably for their
Well, maybe cat and dogs?
Um, yeah, I mean, I know people that have boarded their dogs there, but you obviously have to be a client of theirs or whatever. They probably don't do too many, I would imagine.
It was never actually an issue. I mean, you never heard the noise, and it was never smelly. And we were pretty close. I mean, they butted up.
Yeah, I'm not saying we need it, I just added it because the
Because we have it in there.
It was mentioned in a lot of places.
Single and street family dwellings both reference kennel.
Right, and we talked about removing it from there, so if we remove it from there, do we want to introduce a definition somewhere? And then say where you can have it in the
I'm not a dog owner, so I guess I feel no need for to have a kennel in our village, but I guess if you were to consider all the property over there, maybe it would be
Yeah.
an appropriate thing, would we want it?
Yeah.
What did we decide, special permit, those conditions?
Where over there.
Oh.
Fisher Farm, that's for what's property over here.
Oh, but that then includes all of low density, right?
Yeah. That's the problem.
Yeah.
Yep.
As you can't do it for just one spot.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's suitable, actually. Yeah, I don't, it's necessary.
If we do decide, maybe you could always have a minimal amount, minimum amount of acreage required to have it. You know, that way you're giving offering someone.
In areas
Definitely, especially for that, because you'd have to offer.
Yeah.
Okay, smart move.
Because what if somebody rented one of these empty storefronts, like, say, over at the Cuba Mall, or even in the mall?
In the mall?
For, to, and turn it into a kennel, I mean.
No, that's not
You'd want space for the dogs to be outside.
It's wrong for the animals as well, yeah.
Well, we know that, but could they do that?
Is, so
I don't know.
We wouldn't want them to
And allowed use.
So it's, I would say, it's allowed, this is about you can allow use. Where would we want it?
And right now, it's
But if you don't make it allowed anywhere except for where, where the best place would be, well, Tennessee, what if they butted it over near the airport?
You know, in definition number one, you could, I mean, you could possibly be one of the pet stores that has
Oh, yeah.
Could definitely
Say what, say again?
A pet store.
A little pet, no, you used to have pet stores in
We had one, there used to be one in the
There used to get
Mall.
Yeah, there used to be one in the Cuba
I used to go visit it to see the ferrets, they were
That's right, there was one there, wasn't there?
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, a long time ago.
I used to just go watch the ferrets.
How long ago, maybe I'm thinking
No, a long time ago, because I actually worked there part-time. I mean, it was a long
Just be thinking of that
That's when I first was here.
It was back in the, it was back in
Years ago.
Nineties.
Yeah.
They were out of, the, the people that owned it were from Bangamton, and they had a place down in
That's the one that I'm thinking of, yeah. Okay.
I can't remember what the name of it was, it was
Ace was sort of
No, it was down further.
Other down
It was down where, I think where Sumo is now, actually.
Except in this case, in this case, it was one of the pet stores, blah, 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 the pets, it says, and are not owned by the property owner, there they would be owned by the property owner, if it was a pet store and you're selling.
Right. Any premises, or, searchers, kids, you're not going to cover more than four They're not owned by the property owner.
Right, yeah. Right, I guess if you were leasing, oh, property owner or less.
So, okay, so wait a minute. Now, in Ace, they have a grooming
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not harboring animals there, so, yeah, that's fine.
Harboring.
You're not, yeah.
They're not staying.
I know, I can just leave this, sounds Sounds like, yeah.
I mean, it might not get used much, but you might want to have it as a use with special permit conditions, and then your conditions have something that if it isn't, or if you are allowing it in a residential area, then you need to have a certain amount of area. Because there are some, uh, there are some parcels that are on East Shore that would probably be large enough just fine to have a a kennel if they really wanted one, and then if it's in a, a commercial area, like you have a pet store or whatnot, then, you know, have some conditions to it. Might be a little
Well, that's what I was saying before.
Never get used, but at least it's covered.
Because I, yeah, there are places that I think with conditions, but if, and I probably would think you wouldn't want it in any of the commercial areas, but you'd want it in maybe LDR.
Yeah.
What, what, along, right along East Shore, some of those good places, what, is that, that's LDR, right, all of it?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, I could go for that.
Like, it's some kind of minimum you know, acreage.
And noise control and all that kind, yeah, I mean, it is really all about defining and then enforcing, of course, but
Well, then, think about it. We can go back over these and, again, next step. Um, so the next, the next three or four, well, the rest of them all have to do with, sort of, control tips into this kind of, things like that, so.
I didn't realize there was so many cannabis definitions, I was like
My God, it's big.
So I'm like, so, so which one falls under what the dispensaries in town, like
So is that, that's
That would be the Cannabis Retail Lab and one. So I had controlled substances dispensary, which would be inclusive of the cannabis dispensary, but also I put that into the methadone dispensary, because, you know, that had been a general concern, I think, for people. Um, where we would allow that or want that. But then the cannabis dispensary would just, you don't need both, I don't think, unless you want to include
I think when we Board of Trustees allowed dispensary only here.
Yes.
And then in terms of what I think we were also talking about, though, is, is when we got a special care facility and stuff.
Yes.
That was kind of a different thing, though. Okay, so we're just talking about
So controlled substance is different than the cannabis, cannabis products and cannabis dispensary.
So the cannabis products or the infused products, don't they, I, I've never been in one of these dispensaries, so I don't know. Don't they sell that stuff in the dispensaries?
Yeah, but since that is used within the definition of cannabis dispensary, you should define it.
Yeah.
So we don't currently have a controlled substance dispensary?
No.
Or
Or cannabis.
Or, or a place for use of it.
Correct. Outright, like, I don't know if that would be a clinic, or how Mike would have to shove a definition in there.
Well, somehow we have to have, I believe, like, what, what we went through with the alcohol drug
Well, so then I added into hospital, under hospitals, some possible new definitions for addiction centers and rehabilitation facilities.
Yep, as opposed to a special care facility, didn't, um, include it under that?
That, um
We have assisted living, which it really isn't that, but special care is where
I love special care about the same, because then we were, I added on
Add in the term does not include drug and alcohol treatment, or rehab center. Right. That's, okay, so you think it should go as under hospital?
No, these are
No, these are, she just put it in that area.
Oh, okay.
So we would still have hospital, but then we would also have
But then possible new definitions.
Okay, so we have drug and alcohol treatment and rehabilitation, short-term primary inpatient care treatment. Persons recovering from illness or injury, just not, not, but not including drug and alcohol treatment centers. Okay, so you were going to keep them separate?
Yes.
Let me figure it out, what, these are going to be allowed in?
No.
No, because it's a brand, because it's a brand new, yeah, it would be a brand new definition. So we had to go
I didn't, I didn't, we already discussed it.
Yep.
Where do we allow hospital? The only place we allow hospital is in high, commercial, and HHS. Well, I can see that maybe rehab, if it does not include drug and alcohol, would be, I mean, we have physical therapy in our CMT here, and CLT.
I would be hesitant to distinguish them zoning wise or discrimination based on illness.
Okay. So you'd say, should, we should keep it in the same as hospital?
I would, I would not put rehab facility different from drug and alcohol treatment center.
Oh, okay.
What did you say, Natalie?
I wouldn't treat drug and alcohol treatment center or rehabilitation facility differently
Where we district them.
Less there'd be a concern regarding discrimination based on basis of disease.
Yes.
So if we would allow them the same.
So they should be
You might want different
Additional
Conditions, but
Positions or something.
But, you know
Or we can leave everything under hospital, we don't have to add any definitions.
I think the one thing that was really, um, we were concerned about when we did the ADC, I mean, obviously, we did not have a proper definition, which created a problem.
Yeah.
But I think the main concern, and it's, a lot of it's education, just getting used to it, but we really weren't interested in having it be a methadone, some sort of place where we were dispensing the drugs somehow, or there would be, I don't even know if methadone or, or those kinds of things were concerned so much as other controlling, controlled substance, because they weren't going to do anything except people get them through, maybe aspirin stuff, or, you know, leave and all that. The only drugs they were going to dispense was if they were diabetic or had a medical condition different from
Insulin, things like that.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that was the main issue, because I don't think otherwise.
We, we did have, we did have another subject that was brought up, and that was we were concerned that people would be walking in
Yeah, that was the other thing, as we
Some type, you know, if they're gassed or whatever, they walk in, or they're, they are allowed to leave freely.
Yeah, no, we
Somebody come
That's right.
Up in that type.
And the other thing was, is we didn't want people arriving in the ambulance, OD'd and all that. So there was, but, you know, already things have changed in that regard because of American, so it's kind of interesting how fast, but okay, but, so a disease is a disease, and we would treat them the same. Okay, that works, but we'd have to figure out which districts, yeah.
Yeah.
And do we want, I think we have to have some of this in terms of definition, I don't think, we know it doesn't work.
Yeah.
We went through before, we have
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I would like to see them, I know that we talked about, you know, some sort of drug and alcohol treatment, if we need rehabilitation in there too, but I think having them separate definitions outside of hospital
Is, I think we have
We could do, and the exact same in the district, but, yeah, I mean, for everybody's sake and Mike's sake, lest we go through something like that again, and then it goes
How many, I, I cannot tell you how many hours
I read a lot of articles about it.
Peanuts.
Yeah, but I think it would be
And we never did come up with it, did we?
If somebody wants to have one in the village, great, we have a definition for it now, and it's
Totally, they can't go back and say, oh, and they've been lamenting about this for years, and they did nothing about this.
Now, what's interesting, so I was clicking it up, I came across, this was definitions that was part of our long-term care policy, and I thought, oh, look at that, and it was a long-term care, this is a hospital. Licensed as a hospital by the jurisdiction in which it's located, supervised by a staff of provides nursing services 24 hours a day by or under the supervision of a registered nurse, not amazing? Operates primarily for the care and treatment of sick or injured persons as inpatients for a charge, has access to medical diagnostic and major surgical facilities. I thought was very interesting.
We could use that.
We could make, I suppose, it, what does? This is medical, surgical, yep. I guess one of the things that this doesn't say is that there has to be staff of licensed physicians, which are these
Yeah. Want to, can you circle it out?
Oh, sure. Some elements of it.
Yeah, I think as we think about those things, they would fit into both of these definitions, I can remember here. If you, if you go to the PT place, the people who are there give them physical therapy, are licensed, so they're supposed to
Yeah, I, yeah, I was going to say, but I think that might be important because somebody could
Yeah.
And what was the language in there, supervised by, it's not like
Supervise, yeah, this
By, by license, yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, then provides nursing services 24 hours a day under the, or by or under the supervision of a registered nurse.
Yeah.
And then the licensed physician supervised by a staff of licensed physicians. And that was one of the other things that came up over here, too, is, you know, what kind of
Right.
medical licensed folks were going to be in charge there.
Okay.
Okay.
That kind of brings us back to, I'm thinking back to controlled substance dispensary, and then the cannabis dispensary.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think the concern that it would roughly, that the ADC was just going to be a place to dispense methadone. You could do for controlled substance, substance dispensary to either permit that, or where do you want to permit it, if at all? Add that as a, to the alcohol drug and treatment center, that it not be solely a controlled substance dispensary? That it needs additional purposes?
It's using, a marijuana dispensary, yeah, and a methadone dispensary. Now, we currently don't have anything about this, do we?
No.
So somebody could come and get a variance, or apply for a variance, presumably.
Likely would not be used there.
Yeah.
Do we want to get into this?
Or if you want to exclude it, you need a definition for what excludes it.
Okay, so Okay, so. That sells or otherwise distributes drugs, goods, or materials that are listed as controlled substances. Oh, I hate to be biased, but I'm uncomfortable with a little bit here, we're pretty small. I guess one of the things that I am concerned about is we often talk about the fact that we do not have enforcement here. Except for Mike. And Mike, and Mike. And I'm just not sure that, how this works for certain things. I mean, what do you do with that? There's an issue. Call the sheriff's department?
Someone's illegally operating methadone clinic?
Well, yes. But I mean, if you have a, the point, I guess I'm, I'm not being clear. If you have a dispensary for controlled substances and things get out of control, who's, who enforces that?
They're usually typically licensed.
Yeah.
To distribute.
They have went down in Ithaca.
Are there problems with them just because?
Methadone clinics or the cannabis dispensaries?
Methadone.
Cannabis, I don't think cannabis.
There's a methadone clinic.
Or, or just controlled substances.
Would they have?
Federal controlled substances.
Controlled substances, wouldn't they have that, like, is that about the?
And some recovery services. Cars.
Oh, cars, that's cars.
Where's that?
Oh, cars.
Those are straight, yeah.
Is there a need for it out here? We know that there's a need for helping people.
I mean, it would seem, just looking up methadone clinics in New York City, that there's approximately one per large city in upstate New York.
That's it?
I mean, I don't know how comprehensive this
Yeah.
Find a methadone clinic website is, but.
Yeah, if you don't list it, then it's not allowed.
Yes, not allowed if it's on the list, so we don't have to dive into it, it's just things that I put in. There's one right down in Ithaca.
Well, again, we can think about, think about that between now and the next one. And then the last one really is that last, on the last page, the cannabis retail dispenser. The other two things we said are fine.
Yeah, there's.
Terms in, in that, in that use.
Then I listed up some additional conditions that other municipalities have placed on cannabis dispensaries.
Signs.
Well, the one outside Dryden does have a drive-through, doesn't it?
Oh, does it? Does it have a drive-through?
They deliver too.
There's a delivery car.
Wait, do they have a drive-through?
I thought that they did, I thought that, because I go mountain biking, oh, yeah, okay.
The one on Third Street, I'm gonna have to look the next time I go by.
Because I remember if you turn onto whatever the road is there before, there's either an entrance or exit that's like, I forget which one it is for the drive-through.
I'll have to take a better look when I go by.
Our sign condition, we already don't allow flashing lights. Sorry.
Yeah, I don't think the ones down in Ithaca, because there's like multiple, I mean.
I don't think the ones down there do, the only, I, there's, I know there's little ones, yeah, all over the place.
The one around Third Street. That's the newest one, next to the Third Street Plaza, it's not, well, they don't call it the Third Street.
What is the?
And then there's the one over on Fulton Street.
Are any of these just built into the law, like, how?
Um, I think the 21 over is in the regs.
Okay, that's what I was, I was curious about, but I don't know.
I mean, I could see somebody, I mean, there's a lot of empty space up here in these storefronts, especially now that people are leaving the Trip Hammer Plaza, right?
Conditions, I mean, no one under 21, that's state law. We have the.
Outside storage. Break-in, people could break.
These are just from other.
Yeah, I wonder, I wonder how, but it's not from Christmas.
Also, people couldn't steal that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so they're gonna break-ins, right?
Yeah.
The trade does not include an onsite cannabis consumption establishment, but we opted, that's the line, we opted out of, right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we didn't want caffeine or the same. Like a bar.
Yeah.
We'd rather our people just drink.
Cannabis cafe.
It's like something you wanna do it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You don't wanna do it in there and then get in your car and drink.
I know.
Not anymore, anyway, it's not like the old days.
But I'm interested in signs that have no images.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's kind of a pretty plant, actually.
I think they can get a little distasteful.
Center, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, restrict your storage, not have.
Would you say, Lisa, images?
Images, it's, this is what says, signs for dispensaries can only have letters and numbers, no images, no flashing lights.
So.
Flashing lights have.
And that's what I said, our signs already prevent flashing lights.
From what I've seen, like, the two down in Ithaca, the two newest, you wouldn't even know, like, that, like, it's very.
One has that photo.
Exactly. It's really tasteful, like, the one on Fulton Street, I never even knew what that was until somebody told me, oh, that's dispensary, because.
One on Meadow Street has a picture of a plant. Yeah, it's.
On Meadow, which one, where is it on Meadow?
There one, it's across from the, isn't it?
Like, old Green Star?
Kind of across from Old Green Star.
No, that's Fulton Street.
Yeah, Fulton it is.
They just have their sign, but it doesn't, I mean, you wouldn't.
It has an image though. It's a picture of a marijuana plant.
Oh, I guess.
Which I think is kind of.
I have to, not knowing where this came to, came from, I would imagine, right, those are, those are all good examples, like, I have, but there's a lot of cultural references that if you put it up there, it could be, almost like a distasteful, like, inside joke.
A little graphic, that's pretty nice.
I think it's a lovely.
I would, I would imagine that's probably where that came from, though, whatever, spell your example.
I mean, you wouldn't want lights, right, flashing.
Yeah, that you can't do up here anyway.
But our sign law.
Ling Ling.
There's one down there too.
Oh, there's the way at the other end.
I didn't know there was one down there, I don't get down to that plaza much.
Oh, that, one plaza, there's one there?
Yeah, there's one there.
Oh, I didn't. Near north Trip Hammer, north side.
North side.
Well, at any rate, additional conditions aside, definitions, I mean, it does allow this sort of thing here, and we don't have a definition of it, so.
Or where it's allowed.
Or where it's allowed, so we should probably.
So where allowed.
This one's nice too, that, you know, the state did develop like a whole brand-new licensing, like, groups that are like, hey, there you go, so that one's easy for us to reference.
Yeah, Natalie, I like fire conditions, I mean, no flashing lights, it's already.
Taking care of the signs.
And no one under 21, that's state law, anyway.
What about the drive-through piece of it?
We don't like drive-throughs.
We don't like, we don't like to drive through, no, I.
I knew somebody was gonna say that, how did, how did, how does the existing code address a drive-through at a high-traffic food beverage versus a drive-through at a cannabis? Would we have to build that in there?
High-traffic food and beverage is the only one that allows that.
Okay, so then by, by, by rule, this one just would not, because it's not high-traffic food and beverage. Well, I want a drive-through, well, you're not high-traffic food and beverage, you're a cannabis retail dispenser.
You gotta have food with your.
With your cannabis.
And I wonder, there might be regulations against that too.
You got, you got.
Our money goes to selling brownies.
Yeah, you might just.
But there might be regulations against that too, like, you can't go in and like, you know, have a cheeseburger while you're waiting for your order to get ready.
No, that's what I'm saying.
I don't know.
Like I said.
Be careful. I don't want a cannabis dispensary going in over here next to the Chipotle or something like that.
Well, do. They do, certainly don't want to take you as a rehab center.
No.
Right, that's right.
See, that is, yeah.
But you might, honestly, you might wanna put, that's almost like, you know, the state has the 500-foot rule, we might wanna.
I think there is something.
Okay.
You don't want it close to the YMCA, that would be a.
What's wrong with that?
Because some kids have got more management.
I was just gonna say. We're falling apart here.
The kids, all the kids over there.
Yeah, schools, yes, schools, I think there's stuff.
Yeah, I have to imagine there's something in.
So, we're just, just thinking about it though, where would we want it?
Schools.
I would say keep it in the, the trip hammer corridor over, over in the plazas.
The high-traffic.
CHG.
In here, here.
Yeah, CHG for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, they have, they have 500-foot of, an example, 200-foot.
How about HHS?
You could actually, they have an HHS.
Yeah.
You know, as, as medical marijuana, seriously, I mean.
Yeah, is it, is that close to a school up there?
HHS?
Are.
Yeah, it is, it's.
What is?
Well, I mean, I searched for DeWitt.
Oh, oh, I'm sure you've been doing this school.
DeWitt's right across the street.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that, that, that's the same, right?
From the dispensary's entrance to the nearest property boundary line of the school ground.
Oh, how many, how many?
500.
That's all right then, I think, you'd have to measure it.
Yeah.
But that's all.
They'll figure it out, they'll figure it out.
Um, what about?
You've got the daycare center over there too. Daycare center, you've got Bosse's right there.
Daycare's too little, they're, they're not interested, their parents might.
Depends on what they're definitely. So right here, it depends on, no, what their definition, schools at the top level, yeah.
I mean, the 500, no, Lisa, I mean, the 500 feet from that location.
I'm getting carried away. Okay.
So again, something else to keep, just keep in mind, again, we can talk about them at the next meeting and maybe try to nail these down. But what I do wanna talk about is what we wanna do next, so. So we've got, you know, we've all gone through the current chart of uses, we've all read them, we've all made recommendations about what we think we should add stuff, remove stuff, keep stuff the way it is. I've got that here in the chart that I will, I'll, I'll send it electronically again, but also make sure it gets into a topic that Lisa's gonna bring up at the end here, packets.
Yeah.
But, and then there's sort of, you know, kind of the next thing that we all wanna do, so I would like to just, you know, and it doesn't have to be a huge in-depth thing, but I would like to scroll over that chart again.
Oh.
In case, in case, well, this is just a chart, in case anybody has discrepancies about what we talked about versus what's identified on there. And then the other thing that we need to, well, a couple of other things, one, we need to then to make sure that the actual language in the code matches up with what the chart says, because the chart really is just a cheat sheet for what the code says, right? So we need to make sure that the code language itself matches up with that. And then we also need to go down through all the definitions, and this one is a little tougher for me, I would love to divvy it up like we did last time, but if you divvy it up and you don't go through all the definitions, then you don't know, well, maybe something in, you know, alteration, well, that's a bad one. Assisted living facility really references stuff further down, which somebody else gets.
This part is gonna be really tricky, I think.
Yeah.
So we have, well, what are the sections, we have 145.3, we have 145.82.
Yep.
And then we have things like additional condi, you know.
Yes, that are through.
That trickles through, and sometimes it doesn't work, match. And then, so you go to each of the districts and then you realize, wait a minute, it's allowed in the chart, but not here, or here and not on the chart, and we, we have to really almost go page.
Oh, no, I think we do, so I think we need to pick a use in the, not just a use, but you need to start with the use in the code. Read through it, make sure it makes sense, make sure that.
And then go through each district.
Well, make sure that what's in there in the district for that code is represented correctly on the chart. And then also make sure the things that, 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 that use in code references are accurate, because they're not, right? When it says, oh, reference, you know, 145.82, you know, whatever, eight hospital, or eight, you know, it's, it's all numbered differently, obviously. Sometimes those things are wrong, there's breaks in the ordering where clearly an indent took and it shouldn't be in there, so. Yes, it is a little more, I don't know if it's harder, like, you know, topic and discussion-wise about do we agree, disagree, it's harder paying attention to detail and making sure everything matches up.
So, we have gone through this, and we've taken all these notes, and we have the, you know, what Jim and Yamila came up with, and Mike, and you're gonna have taken all of those changes and put them on this spreadsheet, but how are we gonna check that you got it? I think we need to.
We can do that, so the other thing we can do, and I already went back through and I looked at the notes, so Mike, remember, for each section that we went through, when Yamila and Jim went first, what we did is they all talked, Mike captured what their proposed changes were and sent them out to all of us.
Right.
And so I've already gone through and made sure that those, but we can go back through and, again, we'll do it again.
I think we just need to cross-check, the other thing that I would like to see, so, and I did put this in a format, actually, so I could send that to you. The chart itself, we have changed it from putting the district into each line item in the definition to SP, SP plus, X plus.
Yep.
And that's a little, I wanna, that's the one, once we get it, I wanna just cross-check, because it isn't totally intuitive. But also, I had some other thoughts about, we had allowed use, we had allowed use with conditions, which is X plus, and then we say C 145.58, and then we have special permit required with general conditions. I was wondering whether, well, we should always reference, if there's conditions or something, the condition number, I mean, there's some other little minor things that I think were inconsistent, but I do have a format where I actually figured out how to divide it finally, so that it's LDR, and, I don't know, I'd, I'd like to check it out. And then I had referenced, just for us, when we're going through this, the page number that each district is on in our.
Just for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because that will change, that isn't going through this, when we say, okay, I wanna go to LDR, you can quickly get to it, because that's kind of a drag too, because we have our Michael.
Just, in the future, if we do change, let's say we change some other part of the code or whatnot, or you add something and all of a sudden the page.
The page number.
Just while.
For quick reference for us, say, everybody, yeah, we're on, you know, yeah, clinic, that's on page.
No, 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 in fact, I had to, I had originally done this, thinking I had the current code, and I didn't have the October code, I had the June, and so I had to change a few of these already. But these are now current, and I thought for our review purposes, it might be helpful, that's all.
Yep. So I feel like, just because the definitions, there is so much crossover between, you know, oh, well, what's this, what's that, it goes here, no, it goes there. I feel like that is somehow more of a group activity, whereas reading through each use, we could divvy up again, you could go through and take a look at the same uses that you did before, read through them, make sure do they match up here, yes, do they match up here, yes, do they match up, you know, over in additional conditions, do those all match up, yes? Great, we can check that one off, I feel like that we can do.
Individually.
Individually or as.
Do you wanna, do that, remember you and I talked about maybe going through it and doing it?
Yeah, it would be easier sometimes to say, okay, this is SP plus, and just have two, but that won't take long, once we send the spreadsheet, yeah.
I didn't know if you still wanted, Lisa asked me if I would.
No, I, because we're, we're sort of into details.
If somebody wants to volunteer.
You know, us, we're like.
I think that would be. Do you have any of that kind of stuff?
Came into this sort of midstream.
You know, are, we both like. Tail kind of.
Natalie, but that's, exactly have all the context.
Well, all, well, what I could.
Learning opportunity, but we can't have three people.
Yeah, to be sure, no, no, I'm just saying, maybe it should be included at some point. Just to be sure that we've translated everything into this newer format, that's all I've got, because it is a little, I don't know, it's, every time I was. Is that right?
As I even said to Lisa, I said we should go through all the minutes as well, I mean, and make sure everything.
That's.
Make sure it's on the website, Mike, so I can.
Download them all.
I was putting in what meeting, see, I know, and then I abandoned it.
Well, I went in and looked, like, well, I didn't, they were only in, I thought it was, the last one in was October 28th, but maybe I'm mistaken.
It is the last one.
Oh.
Because we just did the one that in.
I keep forgetting, that's right, the days are going by so fast, I, I mean, we're already in December. You're right, there would only be one, missing one meeting, but no, I like that you, yeah, it was a lot, and I was like, and then I got on the village list, and I was clicking on the minutes.
Yeah, we had three meetings where we presented this stuff.
So, do we want to then, so, it's the holiday season, we're not gonna meet again until January, the first meeting, and this is a topic I'll bring up later, the first meeting in January is the joint meeting with the trustees, so we're not gonna be going over this there, or, we're, we're not gonna be.
And Lisa's gonna be out of commission.
And I, yeah, and then I'm not gonna be around for a bit.
I'm just kinda curious what.
Slow down anyway, but.
What order we wanna tackle stuff in? You know, we can go.
Once we get this in, then we just gotta, yeah, decide.
I mean, we can go down, but we can start, you know, when we have time at meetings, going, working down through definitions and saying, does that make sense? You know, here's what we have, whether, and we can use this one that Natalie gave us, and just say, yes, we like that, or.
No, we don't.
No, we don't, let's edit it, we can do that as a group, right, there's not so many definitions, I mean, some of them are gigantic, but I think that's a good discussion to have.
One of the things is, I just did my CE stuff, and I did bundle C from the New York Planning Federation, which was. which was accessory dwelling units, and then got into short-term rental legislation and stuff. And, um, one of the things I was wondering is, we don't really, haven't decided whether, we didn't have a definition for accessory dwelling units or any of that. Do we, do we have one?
Yeah, it's under buildings.
It is, okay.
You see prints of accessory, everything else.
So, and then short-term rentals, we don't, haven't really calmed that.
So, that we.
But we could put that, we were, I have noted, I think, in my, um, thing here, that we had sort of thought of it with the vacation rentals, there was something in, in one of these where we thought Airbnb was mentioned, I think, or a bed and breakfast is mentioned, but we probably need to insert these kinds of things. Okay. So, it was accessory dwellings, and then they had detached, but we don't need to get into that. We don't short-term rental, and that was it, I guess. Yeah. Okay.
So, you're going to put a new chart together?
Yeah.
And you're not going to touch the actual wording of the district yet?
Right.
No.
Nope.
So, my suggestion would be to the second meeting of January is to go with definitions.
Start working down there.
Yeah, that probably makes the most sense.
We could do it, we did though.
Yeah, there's some suggestions, and I'll definitely read through them.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah.
I just, if I find, like, well, I can't, you know, I just had, you know, I mean, I've had to compare definitions. A lot of them are good, I've got a couple of little small changes, but it was a great job.
Great. Thank you. Was there any particular municipality or area you'd feel like, because one of the things I thought, that I was listening to was this, the Lake George one, was interesting, because they're, they're much more touristy than we are, but.
Yes, they are.
Um, but it was just interesting.
Um, I took a lot from the town in Village of Manlius.
Okay, that was the one you came down on, yes?
Pittsburgh.
Oh, that was the other one, yep.
And just, and then just no one else really, some here, some there, but.
Well, I mean, we're just kind of an odd fish, really, we really are. You know, it just, you say, well, that's not quite right.
Yeah.
As our, I mean, we have.
Do you know much about the Village of Manlius? I had looked up the population, I mean, I, I just saw on the news a couple weeks ago, they were saying that the Village of Manlius is thriving in development. I mean, they've got stuff.
I believe that.
All over. Is it a wealthy, wealthy city?
Very wealthy.
Sort of, I guess, wealthy, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, great school district, very wealthy.
Oh, okay.
Um, but, so, okay, yeah, so, next thing, if we have time theoretically, the second January, and we'll start working down through the definitions. In concert with that, when there is time, people who want to dive into the detail of, uh.
I just want to be sure if it matches on our, on our chart.
It's going to be under.
Yep.
And then we have.
Send the chart out, thank you.
When do you think, when do you think you might do that, just the weekend?
It's a big, it's big, isn't it?
The chart?
Yeah. I mean, does it print on eight and a half by eleven?
It can print on eight and a half by eleven.
Can you read it, if it's printed on eight and a half by eleven?
Sure. Yeah, maybe. I will make sure, no, I will make sure that it's readable.
Okay.
Because I know you said, if I have to print it off on, I mean, I can also put it on eleven by seventeen and put it in the packets, too, so.
Okay, well, I think I actually have some legal size paper, but.
Can you give us an idea when you might send it? And I'm only asking it because of the fact, I know Lisa's family's going to be coming for holidays, and then, and then.
Do you want to work on it before Christmas?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll send it out rather than.
And then we have some time in January, too. I mean, I have some.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send it out.
Even Lisa, after your recovery, you're just going to be laying around.
Yeah, be bored, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Zoom.
We'll be putting you right on Zoom on the week after your.
You'll see. Oh, yeah, I don't feel.
I know. So, you aren't going to be able to lay still that long.
Yeah, I was going to say, you're not supposed to lay still that long.
No, I know, she's not.
No.
She'll be like itching to get out of.
No, no.
No?
Sky either, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, I will, I'll have it out, um, I'll at least have it to you.
So, when, when are we going to present what we think for uses in certain districts to the Board of Trustees? Because some of this, if they don't think it's a good idea, we should know.
Yeah. So, uh, let's wait until other business, and we can discuss that.
Okay.
But yes, it's on my list of other business. Okay, uh, next item on the, anything else on that from anyone? Uh, thank you for all of them.
Thank you, yeah.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the trustee report.
Well, yeah, well.
We got the November one.
Yeah, there's a November, there's a November one still from Jim. Because we didn't have our second meeting. So, Jim's got a November one, then you've got a December one.
If I can find my notes.
So, go for it, Jim.
All right. It was, it was a long meeting, but not as long as Lisa's, but, um, there's really not a lot to report. Um, they updated the, uh, Code of Ethics and voted a new resolution to add the new Code of Ethics to the employee manual. Um, they explained that the Beers came in to submit paperwork, it's owned by Beer, I think Beer LLC. They want to join the DMAP program, which honestly, I don't know what that is, but.
Management?
Oh, the beer management, oh, okay.
Maybe I misheard it, but, so I just wrote it down the way I heard it. Um, they hadn't previously asked, but submitted paperwork and they approved the resolution, they had seventeen persons to the, uh, DMAP program. And it was a long discussion about how to disseminate a survey of village residents. Um, but there's going to be more discussion on that, and, um, they discussed about receiving grant monies and, um, regarding a bridge and various issues regarding grant money, and, um, Carolyn mentioned about a meeting she had with a Cornell professor of landscape architecture, who, um, she thought had some good ideas about the village parks, it was part of the Greenway. Kind of a disjointed report, but that's, that's what there was.
Continue it.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So, that's November seventeenth. I guess we're doing December first.
December the first, um, it started out, actually, somebody from the public came, and as usual, if somebody from the public speaks, you can't understand them because of the acoustics and everything. But it had something to do with one of the Milcroft, um, I think it's a, one of the ponds had dried up, and they were upset, I guess it's ugly. It was maintained, it was drained for maintenance. But that was explained, but I think, you know, that's something we should be mindful of, that people have to understand, that they're drained for a reason, and that they are for a reason, and you know, and not everything's about how pretty this looks. So, um, so that was brought up. Then, um, there's something about water and sewer overpayment, and they returned the overpayment, but they returned the overpayment. And then it says, well, only the penalty fees will be withheld.
Yeah. Payment was made late, and then a duplicate payment was made, and the user requested refund of the second check that was sent. But the check didn't include the penalty amount, so they withheld the penalty amounts and then returned the half of the over.
Yes. So, then when you come in this and you're really getting part of it, it's like, you don't really know what's going on. Okay, so then they discussed the comp plan, apparently, there's an updated version that was sent on that very day. Um, but they're also considering some, apparently, the survey that went out, there's some additional survey that's been received, and they're continuing to send some surveys out. Um, they just talked about updating the charts and the maps. Then, um, the new comp plan sent, oh, I had a question, did we get a copy of the new comp plan? I didn't think so. Yeah, but there's something, see, um, then it was the Climate Smart, um, Committee and the C, Climate Smart and CEC, they got, like you said, they were talking about the grants, what are we going to do with the grants? Um, I don't think they really decided, they had.
There's a survey.
Yeah, so they have a survey, um, stuff like pollinator gardens, bikes, educational outreach, trees, Greenway master plans, so I guess they're going to continue to work on that, figure it out. But one of the things that was suggested was a park master plan, and I think that was, um, they're going to end the survey input as of the end of January, before the budgets are considered, so that they kind of know what direction to go with that. The Greenway Committee, um, I didn't quite understand this. The town of Lansing apparently got a, a grant for, um, a trail around the ball field.
They got a quote for the trail around the ball field.
For five hundred thousand dollars.
Where is it?
Around the ball field in Lansing, the town.
Oh, they got a quote to do. Oh, but, okay, that's what it was, but it turns out we could do it.
So, Carolyn was just demonstrating that the village saves money, because we do projects in-house, or the town bids them out.
I see.
Yeah.
The town doesn't, right, I mean.
The town doesn't do it in-house anymore.
Oh, okay. So, um, one of the things that they're hoping, they're hoping to do is this, this, getting the students involved with this landscape person, to get, um, an existing and a connecting trail plan going, um, emphasizing connectivity. Then they talked about the fact that they're developing the job description for the deputy village clerk and treasurer, and adding a title, that title, I believe. They're discussing the advantages a little bit of doing that. And they, if they do change certain things, then they have to reapply to the New York State for a new description of an exempt position versus a non-exempt position. So, they passed a resolution to accept the current, I had, I wrote current job description, which I guess is exempt.
Current definition that's being used by Tompkins County, which is currently an exempt position.
So, they're going to have to apply to the state. Um, and they talked then about what the onboarding process, and Jody, I think, has sent the letter to us, and I know that you and I have sent some suggestions, and that, um, then in addition, this is to introduce newcomers to the board positions, um, each chair would be responsible.
Yep.
So, um, there was some discussion about including trustees with some of the planning board training. And, um, also the possibility, pardon me.
What training?
Any kind of training. Um, and then there was also some discussion about having, um, cross-syle communication, basically, almost a retreat, kind of feeling like having a meeting once a year, so where all the boards got together, not just to our house, but also the VCA and the D W staff, just to get everybody going in the same direction. A joint meeting of all, and they talked about, um, the thing that Carolyn brought up, that she has put out the, um, for consideration, the formation of a commercial area advisory committee, and she had it right up here. And there's some really good ideas in here, but as Ronnie pointed out, there's still a lot of work. You have to really think this through, you want, it's easy to set up a committee, but to be sure you get the right people. So, he wanted some criteria established and some process behind it, which was very.
And that got, so that got sent out to everybody, too, I think.
And, you know, it's a good idea, though, with.
It was the agenda, it was.
Okay, I remember reading it, okay, yeah, okay.
I mean, it, it, it's a great idea, it's just it has to be thought through and fleshed out a little bit more.
Thought through.
So.
Right, you have to, you have to figure out who to get what from, and then you're going to ask people for, do something with it.
And then you got to be sure that.
Yeah.
Well, and sometimes having twenty people on a committee is, well, it makes sense. It's smarter sometimes to have a smaller group of people that are.
Yeah. The right people.
The right people, a smaller group of the right people. But I think, yeah, no, I agree, I'm, I'm really concerned, actually. I watched, after watching the recording of the meeting the last, I was like really concerned, more concerned than I was when we talked about it, when we were doing the comp plan.
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, there's just some things here that I think, once it gets a little more fleshed out, we can give her some more ideas. But I think, you know, if we have some thoughts on it, because, you know, when it says meeting, I'm thinking, no, you know, it's out of sight, out of mind, it's got to be something more regular than that, and people make the commitment to it. But I think we have to sort of know what we want, too. I mean, one of the things that's driving me crazy is parking here. We should be able to somehow progress in some way. I mean, it's getting harder and harder downtown.
Uh-huh. Yes, especially the other day.
Yep. Okay, but that's not what they talked about, you know. Um, let's see, what's next? Policy review, records and management, I don't really, I don't, I'm not understanding my stuff here. Then there was general discussion. There was really nothing else. Oh, they were talking about which trees to take. They were talking about a system for collecting info on the short-term rental properties, I guess the county.
The county has made their website. Live, but then the link didn't work.
But they, yeah, they said, let's be sure, but we want to let, put it out on the website that you can now see where short-term rentals are, but we got to be sure it's working before we put it out there. So, that was one of the things.
Saw me and Kevin smiling at the same time.
So, that was sort of it. But you're right, it was a long meeting, nine oh five.
Oh, okay. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is other business. Lorraine, or I can start on this side of the table, I feel like.
Are we going to talk about, are we going to talk about the joint meeting?
Yeah, I have that under my other business, so, yeah, let's, well, let's.
Anything I have for that?
Yeah, let's save that for, yeah.
So, I don't have anything, but I do have a question, actually, this will be from Mike. Um, it's regarding the sidewalk law. I tried to find information on the sidewalk, and I, I can't find anything. I'm not exactly sure where all that information is.
Our, like, ours?
Yeah, I have Lisa, like, looking up stuff, and what I was looking for, I couldn't find. So, my question is, is there something in the code for the sidewalk law regarding maintenance of sidewalks that are, um, in front of residential area or even business areas that the village may not be taking care of, like, it's not their jurisdiction to take care of? Or they're not assigned to take care of that? I mean, I know the village, they're taking care of all, mainly, all the sidewalks and the, and the trails and stuff, but a good example is the East Point sidewalk that runs along Beaumax. I'm assuming that's East Point's responsibility to take care of that sidewalk?
I don't know for sure, I would have to check with John on that.
I've never, I've never seen the village maintain that sidewalk, just.
But I, I'm not going to say it because I don't know for.
Okay, I've never seen, in my six and a half years of living there, I've never seen the village maintain that sidewalk. Um, so, my question is, so, I'm assuming East Point is responsible, and I, nothing against our maintenance team, the guys are great, it's just that they're spread so thin, that usually they'll plow that sidewalk once, and then once it starts snowing and snowing, they aren't doing anything with it. And I'm really noticing it this year, because right now that sidewalk is like all ice, and people walk on that sidewalk. I mean, people are walking more than they've ever walked, right? And so many people walk that sidewalk, walk that sidewalk with their dogs. People from down below in the other neighborhood walk that sidewalk. Um, but my question is, is there anything in the code, is there a violation if the person that's responsible for caring for that sidewalk doesn't take care of it? Did they, is there some sort of violation? Like, you know, the city of Ithaca, you got to, like, shovel out, out in front of your house, right? And I think.
It has something specific, that they're responsible for taking care of the sidewalk, and I'm sure they have a whole.
Right, right.
Because it, your first question may actually answer the second question, if, depending on who's responsible for it. You know, I don't know of anyone else that's responsible for the sidewalks other than the village of Lansing.
Well, heck, if the village would take care of the East Point sidewalk, I would be like so happy, but, because. Yeah, no, like I said, I've never seen the village maintain that sidewalk ever. Um, I, East Point will plow the sidewalk with their small plow, um, but, like, I was looking today after it snowed last night, those guys didn't touch it, they're not throwing any salt on it. And so, like, I wouldn't walk on it, I'm walking in the street, because I'm not taking any chances of falling. Um, it's just going to take one person to fall.
Yeah, I'm trying not to, because that's a good question for the whole village.
You know, it's something to think about, because, especially, you know, I'm walking on all the other sidewalks and the village is taking great care. I mean, this winter, like, the village trails are spotless, like, you wouldn't even know it snowed, you know, the other day.
Yeah, do you want to wait until the next meeting, or do you want Mike to send it?
No, I want, this wasn't for the joint meeting, this was.
No, I mean, do you want, oh, that's right, the next meeting, the joint meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I was just curious, sort of, something in the code about a violation if they're not caring for the sidewalk?
Who maintains, um, the one here in Oak Crest, for the Lansing Meadows?
We do.
Oh.
See, I think, I thought, and, but it isn't in the code, the only reference in the sidewalk and trails thing is, "All required side rock shall be maintained and constructed in accordance with current New York State DOT specs issued by the Village Superintendent of Public Works." But it doesn't, and blah, blah, blah. But it doesn't, and blah, 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 so it has to be strong enough to handle a fire truck or something. I thought that we have required sidewalks to be built by the developer, but then, once it passed inspection, remember what that was, a hangout down here, then we, as a village, took responsibility for it. And I always thought that the village, I was making the assumption that that one on Beaumont.
Maybe nobody ever told.
I'm assuming the village is responsible.
I think so, too.
Well, we'll let Mike.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, good, well, thank you, because if they are, they've never maintained it in the six and a half years it's been there, so. And the other thing is, you know, where our sidewalk ends, down where the Lansing trails start, I mean, they don't, they're not maintaining the little bits of sidewalk that they have down there at all, so. On either side of the road, because there's even a stretch of sidewalk on the across that goes down to Norway or whatever. They're, they're not doing anything with any of that.
Before I speak, let me just.
Yeah, I'll find out, but let us know, because.
Yeah, let us know, because I'm curious. I mean, I'm not trying to.
I always thought we took them responsibly, but we'll see.
Hey, maybe the village will be, hey, I know two happy guys, it would be really happy if they found out the village is gonna be responsible for that sidewalk.
Yes?
Uh, no, everything else I've got for the joint meeting.
Jim?
I don't have anything.
Kevin?
And I don't have to shovel my sidewalk. Sidewalk around the corner.
I just drive it around in my truck, I don't even, when it gets really deep, I'll just blow it, but I don't know. I feel like it builds character for the kids to trot through the center of the truck.
Okay. Lisa?
Okay, I had mentioned this to Mike. I am finding that since we've stopped getting packets, that, um, and I know part of it is just, I was used to, some of it I don't care about, it, you know, but there's something about knowing the packet is waiting for me, having it printed out for me, because I didn't print out this because my toner was down and I just thought, I'll print nine pages. And there's something about being able to notice it on my table, oh my God, I've gotta do my packet. There's a different level of commitment I'm finding for me and I'm not sure other people, I think, yeah, you acknowledge that there's something about that. And I'm wondering if we could go back to getting, because then you have to print this stuff out for us anyway. It's a matter of timing, whether you, we might be able to go back to getting it on Thursday or Friday rather than when we come here. And.
It would be nice to still get some stuff electronically that you send out and that's great, but yeah, I think, because there's some stuff that's just nice to have electronically, but.
Well, I like having the agenda immediately.
Yeah, yeah.
So that we know what's coming, like, then I can say, oh gosh, I better plan to have extra.
I'm gonna need a chunk of Saturday to.
Yeah, exactly, but other than that, and, you know, and there are things that, you know, if you start excluding them, then it's like, duh, then you'd have to produce them for the meeting, like a secret or something. So I was just wondering if we could go back to paper packets.
I try to get the agendas out, you know, like that one saves.
Yeah, usually you do.
Usually try to do that, but then the rest of it, kind of waiting for some.
But then I was also that, the advantage, I think, too, about that is, there's a cutoff point and we always know what happens with some of that stuff with these developers and other people. And it's just, will make it easier, I hope, for you, too.
Sorry, the packets have already gone out, yeah.
Yep.
Now, if there is a last minute addition that Mike needs to give us for something that's more like internal, it's like, hey, Natalie, about that resolution, it wasn't there in time for the package.
Natalie just gave us the definitions.
Okay, sure, right, yeah.
And I thought I remembered, I probably am wrong, but in the days of the packets, the material was also available electronically, but it's nice to have the physical packet. I mean, I totally agree with the Lisa theory. When you see it sitting on your desk or table, yeah, I gotta deal with this.
It's easier for me to pick up, right, if I'm sitting at the kitchen table Sunday morning having coffee, knowing that I have this meeting the next day, I can play Wordle on my phone or I can drink my coffee and pick up a packet because it's there, I don't wanna get my laptop and, yeah, just.
So it's not just me, no?
No, well, I mean, you know what, like, when Natalie sent the definitions, I'm like, oh, should I print this out? And I'm like, oh my God, it's like 10 pages.
It's, yes.
But I, something like that, I like to have a hard copy.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's hard to put it, it's easier to get really.
On your laptop, you've got it open, but you're also looking at other stuff electronically to match, you know, to.
It's a work to do it, do it yourself. I mean, you have the packet for the reasons, for the reasons that we've all discussed, but also, you know, particularly, you know, with weather like this, you may wanna stay home and read it on the screen.
Like Mike said, he prints it off anyway, so then you have to remember to bring your packet with you because we won't, you know, print it out.
Maybe you'll have an assistant that can do all this copying for you. Yes, it's, this is not the kind of stuff you should be wasting your time on and that's my.
I do all of this, why don't we get next form of state?
We're gonna have to ask that, but we should be, because I already put all the volunteer meetings on my calendar and I'm like, oh my God, it's on Columbus Day again.
What?
Whatever.
Yeah, it's always.
It's always on Columbus Day, no, it is, yeah, it always is, it's always gonna be.
As duly noted out, like I have it.
Maybe we should put that on our joint meeting.
Yeah.
Because Columbus Day off.
Trustees don't read on holiday or federal holidays.
Yeah, they don't.
That's why we do.
Okay, next year. Something you pronounce, say it's year before.
Just send an email and say the packets are ready for the.
I usually send it out electronically, then I'll say packets are.
Are available in the best of your.
Yeah, they're just right out there.
They're just out there, so they're always available. Unless somebody lifts it, you know, somebody might lift it on.
And your name will be on the pack.
And just make sure you bring it with you, that's all.
Oh, yeah, make sure you bring your packet back.
And the envelope.
Yeah, the envelope, no, that's what I mean, the envelope. Mike collects, he collects them back and then he raises them.
That's it for me.
Okay. Anything from another? Okay, updates you wanted to give us?
No, a couple of things, I'll probably go over with you a little bit later on, but I've been taking in-service training, which is giving you the updating code for next year changes, well, many of the large changes. Some of the things on there, you've already heard rumors of, uh, they were supposed to ban fossil fuels for all, you know, that's, I hold it right now until we get a court, court decision on what's going on. I cannot dare get into all of the energy code changes. Personally, I think it's a bit over the top, but whatever. That's kind of all I've been doing. I can't see, one thing I wanted to ask, I know you're gonna get into the dual meeting there, is what do you wanna do if Chris Fiallo comes in and says, hey, I'd like to present to you folks?
Like to what?
Like, so if Chris is ready to present?
Yeah.
If he says, well, I'm ready to present at the first meeting in January, well, that's our joint meeting. Do we want him to come there for that or do we want?
Do you want no special permit or anything like that during that meeting? That's what I kinda need.
Oh, I see, are we gonna do only joint?
I don't need to jump the gun for.
No, it's fine, we can talk about that first of all. So we chatted about it first, I gave my opinion of what everybody else has been.
So that can bounce right into what you wanna talk about.
I guess it depends on how long the agenda is already.
Good point.
I mean, fortunately, the meeting will start at seven since we're hosting.
And we don't have the comp plan to go over, well, but, or maybe, right, maybe there's a new version of it out there, maybe they do wanna talk about that.
I don't know, Pat, ask Pat. Pat's the one that's doing the editing on the comp plan.
I'm not sure when it's gonna be done, to share, you know, to share, hopefully, I mean, my goal was to get it done early January, I think. I got a little behind on things and, and I still have some formatting I have to do, but I'm gonna wait until all the other edits are done.
Oh, all right, so if you're not gonna get it to the trustees until you said early January?
But it might be.
I'm not sure.
It might be something.
I think we're hoping to have it ready to share by then.
Okay.
So our meeting's the 12th, so.
So, well, there's some advantages to having presentation for everyone, I suppose.
Yeah.
If it wouldn't be expert in early line, it depends on what else we think we might.
So we'll have, so we'll have the agenda set by then, well before we know whether Chris is gonna present at that meeting or not, so. So, okay, so we don't wanna flat out say no unless there's really a lot that we're gonna go over, because.
Yeah, let's.
His topic might be a lot, also.
Yeah, I'd like to have some kind of answer when we leave, only because if, say, Chris calls you, probably, hey, I gotta get stuff ready for early January, is that okay?
Why don't you give me a call first? Let's see when he's gonna be ready. See when he gets ahold of you and then you can.
I'm not poking, I'm not poking the bear.
I wouldn't.
But then, yeah, we'll see, maybe.
You know, an interesting thing came up on the, one, out of that bundle C, it was very interesting in Lake George. One of the things they talked about, they had some good ideas for things, like if there were two-story buildings that were being used, especially like some of the buildings we have, to allow different zoning incentives, to mixed, put residential on the top floor and mixed use on the, or, you know, have a mixed use thing and allow some differences. But one of the things that was interesting, too, was they had identified some areas that were kind of run down and so they kind of developed a plan that they thought, you know, their wish list kind of thing, literally a sort of a site plan it was. They have different resources, but it was interesting, so that when somebody came with, said to you and said, you know, we're thinking, we're looking at this way, you know, here's some of the way we think we would like to see it, which was an interesting thought, I think, about how you tell them what your vision is before they even start too much, you know, and whether, but it was just a, an interesting kind of thing to think about, keep in the back of your mind, maybe go forward.
Okay, so we'll do that, but what I did wanna talk about, obviously, is topics for, topics for the next joint meeting, that was one of the feedback items from the last one, so I, I would, in leading into, I think, maybe at least you've read it, one of the things that I would like to do, obviously, is give them an update on where we are with the chart reviews or the, you know, code review as it comes to uses. So I do wanna give them an update on that, we can walk through the process we've been working on, let them know where we're at, if they wanna talk about any, you know, things in specific or if we wanna, you know, kind of focus in. I know that they showed some interest before when we talked about creating some new uses and so, like, you know, the.
So how do you wanna do that? Do you wanna present the chart with where we plan to add or make changes?
Yeah, I think, I think we'll present something graphically like that. I know they know the big chunk about BT. BT, I might just hide that stuff entirely, but, and it might not just be like, you know, hey, here's the chart with all the colors and everything that we have on it, but maybe just a, a kind of prettier image of, you know, some of the high-level things that we were talking about, not, not capturing every single change, they'll get all that information anyway, but at least giving them an update on where we are with that. What else, though, do you want from the planning board to share with them or would like them to share with us? I would like an update on the, even if it's not ready for, you know, 100% primetime, I would like an update on the comp plan since the last time that we met, I know they've put a bunch of, you know, effort and work into that, but what other things?
Well, one of the things I've, so now we're having basically twice a year joint meetings, right?
Yep.
I think it's none too many, or, yeah. I have always thought that one of the things, and now that it's budget time, actually, that when we go to the New York Planning Federation, we said, it would be really great if a trustee would also come, I think.
The Planning Federation?
Yeah, because, you know, I think that's one of the things, like, we don't know, even though we go as liaison, really, the high, you know, the hot topics are and they obviously cross over.
Sure, oh, yeah.
And vice versa, but going to the NICOM, actually, so that we kinda know what, I mean, we're, we're playing, we're not really, I just feel as though there's some disconnect there between our boards, kind of going our own.
Yes, definitely.
So let's discuss it, that's fine.
I mean, that did sort of.
Board to board relations.
Yes, yeah.
That, it did sort of come up at the trustee meeting this last time.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could use a welcome letter into a discussion of how to improve board relations.
Relations is, yeah, so that we're working on the same stuff.
Yeah, or keep the other board in mind whilst working on your stuff.
Yeah. I mean, that's the idea of our liaisons, really, but it's, which is kind of, you know, was always, you know, go to find out what is impacting what we're doing. Right. Really parallel playing at the moment.
So leading off of that, one of the things that I think we should talk about and based off the last trustee meeting was, I strongly feel that the, the village staff, including everybody, everybody's staff, that they incorporate into the budget for next year, a one-day retreat and get.
Already wrote that down. If you see me not writing something, it's there.
And get a really good facilitator, it'd have to be a, I mean, I know facilitators from Cornell, but you need to have somebody that is geared with this whole municipality thing and has knowledge of the planning boards, the trustees, how a village operates. Maybe we could contact the village of Manlyas to see if they know somebody. But honestly, you know, everybody's working really hard in the village, but from my view, it doesn't look like people are working together. It looks like some people are working harder and doing a lot more than other people, but it seems like there's also a disconnect between the departments. No offense, Mike, I know you're working hard, but I just think that maybe a whole day retreat for the departments or all the boards, too. All the boards, everybody.
I think she means.
All village staff.
We're not staff, yeah.
Well, no, well, I think they do consider us staff, because.
I know, well, that was one of the changes I suggested in the letter, because legally we're not staff.
But I think when they refer to us, no, I, I mean, everybody, I mean, the village staff and all three.
And all three boards.
That's a lot of people.
Well, it is, but I think it's needed, I really do, because I think there's sort of a disconnect.
Is there a way to, not that I'm trying to avoid it, but is there a way that things like that are done if it's like a?
I'd have to ask an ICOM.
Right, you're not talking about official village business, you're not making business decisions, it's really like.
You're not gonna make any votes.
Oh, no, right, you're not gonna vote on, right, because it's not really an open meeting, yeah.
No, I think that, I just don't know, I mean.
Yeah, that's exactly what we.
I think it's fine.
It'll be like a personal, personal.
I have to imagine it's like if three of us ended up in the same, you know, the same CLE thing.
It's development staff.
Yeah, it's development activity.
If you could find out, that I'd be interested in that.
I can't imagine. I bet you there's grants for stuff like this.
What, what else?
Oh, so some of these other things I'd like to bring back up is the mall. You know, I brought that up like a year ago now about maybe contacting whoever, I mean, the owners, the property manager, not the property, the senior regional manager or whatever, to find out what they're doing over there.
Yeah, I think Ronnie sent an, I don't know, yeah, I think we can bring, because when I met with him, I think he sent something, I thought that I'd mentioned that at one point in the meeting, but.
Well, not just, not just that mall, but the other malls as well?
Well, now it's just sold, so that'd be a good.
The other one is, yeah, because the Tripphammer one, just.
I mean, there's really.
New ownership.
Yeah. I'm more concerned about what's going on over here.
I wonder if somehow, along with, you know, the project that Carolyn's kind of taking care of with the.
Commercial thing.
With the commercial, I wonder if there's almost like a, like, like there was the concern about, hey, it's a lot of people, okay, well, great, what if there's a smaller board? But if there, it would be interesting to me if there was like a, I don't wanna call it a subcommittee, but I'm going to like, of like, you know, the mall, because there, I mean, between the three malls, they make up a big chunk of, I just, if we could get somebody willing to participate from the three of those, they don't have to be on that core thing, but at least to have some sort of, yeah, we can bring it up again, yeah, absolutely, and not just the one, all three, but, obviously, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should find out what is going on over there.
But it would be good, not with the new ownership, the other one would be a good time.
Right, right.
Get in touch with them, sort of just say welcome and hello.
Or maybe invite them to, invite them to a trustee meeting, I mean, we can always attend or whatever, and give a presentation on what their plans are, especially since they have businesses that are leaving over there.
Yeah, we can, like I said, I'll shoot this all over to Ronnie, and hopefully he has some ideas, too, because I'd like to get them all to Mike compiled or Jody.
So the other thing is traffic control. So anyway, just so you guys know, one of the requests that I had had and was bugging the DPW for three months, was to put electronic radar signs on Beaumont, and they were installed probably a month ago now, and I have noticed some improvement. People are slowing down when they see those things flashing at them, so I've been really happy about that. But there are many other problems. I know Kevin had mentioned he'd like to see signs by the crosswalk, I think that's something we should bring up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, combine my.
The crosswalk by Kevin's house that goes from one sidewalk to the other, because the sidewalk ends and it starts. And the other thing is, the whole Norway Janiver, those stop signs make me crazy. People are running those stop signs, I see it every day. I've been crossing the street, I've been crossing the street, and they're coming, they don't even care that I'm in the middle of the street, and they're still going through the stop signs. I see the Keegah Medical van flying through there, the Guthrie van flying through there, I mean, I've seen some of the neighbors also not stopping, one in particular.
One got hit by one, and then I swear they lived, and they pulled into their driveway.
Yeah, one in particular who lives in that neighborhood, who owns half of that neighborhood, flying through four stop signs. I mean, what kind of an example is that? Anyway, I think that whole area needs to be re-looked at, in my opinion.
Well, on that topic, too, one of the things that I, I'm really still concerned about is, now that the Keegah Mall is pretty full, the whole walking, there are stop signs, people run those all the time, too, but it's getting pretty scary sometimes with the people walking from the parking area to all of the stores. I only, I very seldom go to the far end, so it's only in that first beginning, you know, five stores or so, but it's really, do we have any control over that, or?
People don't even stop for, I mean, I can't even scream how many times.
I will say that I, what about the traffic light there, you know, there's a lineup now because it's full, and when they're coming out, the, you know, the intersection with it going down to Tops is directly across. That whole thing is just, that is ours, though, right? Because it's state.
I think that's how, but it's ours.
I.
No?
No, it's not. I think it's state.
So I think the timing on that light has changed. I don't know, I was sitting there in the, in the far left lane to make the turn onto Trip Hammer to go that way, and I was sitting there forever one day, and I'm like, what the heck's going on? Why isn't the light changing?
Yeah, it's really quick when it does.
Yeah, so something, they changed something. Something in the timing has changed.
I was gonna say, I think we're gonna get into some jams with some of that whole area there, now that, you know, there's a price to be paid for having a full mall, and I'm just wondering, who is responsible for that? Today, actually, when I went over there, I noticed that when I first, oh, okay, so I came from south, turned left to go in there, and there, speaking of holes and potholes, it's the very first entry where there's the little kind of boulevard-y thing right by the mobile station, but that, it's like, the center line of that entrance, it's like just shot, it's like a hole, it's a big, long thing, check it out. I thought, oh my God, if I had gotten in there with my tire, I think it would really be a problem. I think there's a problem going on there, I don't, but it's water, is washing, anyway, it didn't really have been like that before. But there's, it's just as you first go in, and it's like the center line.
Oh, really?
See what it is.
Well, I added that, we can talk it up, or we can, I'll add to the agenda.
Well, I want Mike, I want Mike to see it.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say.
But the traffic, it's more about how, yeah, it's all about traffic and traffic control and the lighting, the lights, I think it's.
Maybe it's time to look at, look at another.
Well, so that's what, and maybe that's, yeah, maybe there is some study, again, maybe something with grants, or maybe with some other things that we can just, you know, focus on a couple of key areas and, yeah, look at traffic and, you know, get designs. Haven't, or Jim, anything that we haven't covered that you want to?
No.
We'll leave, we'll leave time to make sure, because this is another one of the feedback items from, from the second, or will this be our second or our third, I forget, is we'll make sure that we do have just like another, kind of like we're doing now, or like we do always here, just another business, a once around to, you know, if something popped into your mind that you want to bring up. I might not be able to cover it there, but at least it's something that we can, you know, get on the radar to talk about, hopefully before the next joint meeting, but at least, yeah.
They're gonna bring things to tell us?
So I'm, I'm gonna send this list to Ronnie tomorrow, and then we'll see what he sends back for things from there, and yeah. Thanks if they want to share, things that they want to know about, that we're working on, yeah.
Nothing to do with that, just wait a second.
Okay.
Adelita's still not open, right? Nothing.
They put their new sign, they took the temp sign down and put a real sign on, so, nothing.
So I saw on Facebook today, or maybe it was, no, it was on Next.
Stores, not Facebook, was on, was it Next Page or whatever it is.
Next Doors.
And they were asking, is it going, somebody said, oh, they have supply chain issues and sort, and I just didn't, I thought, all right, I gotta ask.
Yeah, because the person said she contacted the company or whatever, she contacted their, their location up in Syracuse, and they said that they were having supply, supply, delivery issues.
Anything more from you?
If you can operate to commit for me before they go.
Okay, so you'll let us know.
I saw a tractor-trailer pulled up to their entrance this afternoon when I was leaving Tops.
Supplies are here.
Look at that, you talk about supply chain, there it is.
No, who said the done? Okay.